Hello everyone, uh I hope all are doing well and how are you please comment. And without wasting your time, I know this is very important time for you because you are preparing uh for competitive exams. Okay, every second, every minute is very important for you and you will feel like uh lot of with a lot of pressure. So without wasting your time, uh let's get into the topic. Today we are going to learn five year plans of Indian economy, okay. So uh my allow to understand first we will discuss some previous year most expected previous year questions then. We'll get into the uh topic and matter. Okay, so last year under last five to six years most important questions. And the way they five year plans. E topic some questions, our questions need most relevant questions. Okay, so. Let's get into the uh questions again, questions. Okay, first uh first question. Which five year plan of India placed first priority to agriculture and irrigation? Okay, and the four options which are first five year plan, second five year plan, third and uh fourth five year plan. Okay, so answer. You will solve this question very easily. Okay, second question during which five year plan did the government formulate the agricultural policy that led to the green revolution? Next question. Twenty point formula, twenty point formula launched in which year? Twenty point formula launched in which year and matter, okay. Next question, second five year plan based on which model? So uh this second five year plan. Design. Okay, next. The main reason for globalization. Okay, and the next question is which among the following is not an objective of? Not not an objective of Indian economic planning. Next question, which five year plan, which five year plan? Focused on growth with stability, growth with stability, sorry, growth with social justice and equality. Next question which is during which five year plan growth rate was lowest? Okay, and next question which policy measure has not been a part of liberalization, privatization and globalization, okay? And the next question is which of the following is one of the twin objectives of fourth five year plan? Okay, even even these questions most expected and previous years. Okay, topic look. Topic look choose the five year plans. So even manam nineteen fifty one to nineteen fifty six. Next, if five year plan. Okay, here question. Manam, yeah, we didn't prepare. So he based on first five year plan. Domer model, Harald Domer model. Okay, then a target growth. Two point one percentage because uh chala problem. And severe food shortages. And inflation chala high level. After that nineteen fifteen. So then a objective. Objective entity rehabilitation of refugees and food sufficiency. Even uh main targets. Here, ah time low mainly focused on agriculture. Price stability because of inflation and power and transport. And infrastructure. Okay, next. Important ah time no important irrigation project. Bahtrananggal, Hirakul and Metu Dam, Domer Dams, Sudamada Dams. Ah time no T S Kuna major irrigation project. At the time low community development program. Okay, so it is manam successful plan. That last two years low. Nineteen fifty five to nineteen fifty six. Manaki good harvesting. So revise. So here main important points. Uh present. Next, growth rate. What are the objectives are there and main focus? Agriculture and industry some irrigation projects. So incovert irrigation project. Here agriculture, irrigation projects, community development program. Okay, last good harvest. Okay, let's get into next five year plan that is second five year plan, second five year plan. Okay, second five year plan. Nineteen fifty six, so first five year plan. Nineteen fifty one to nineteen fifty six, so five years. First five year plan. Okay, so now second five year plan. So nineteen fifty six to nineteen sixty one. This second five year plan. They never prepared. A model, a model base. Then prepare. We can call this five year plan as PC Mahalanobis model. Then a target growth rate. Four point five percentage. And achieve. Four point three. Objectives. Initiate industrialization. And uh look global wise. Public sector. And industrialization, industry. Industrialization. At the time low hydroelectric power projects. Five steel plants, five steel plants. Uh develop. Establish. So at the time low manaki industrial, industrialization. Industrialization. Industrialization, industrial policy nineteen fifty six. Based on socialist. Manaki industrialization. At the time no atomic, atomic energy uh commission in department of atomic energy. So e points. A example definite. For questions. The atomic energy commission in the department of atomic energy. A year low establish. A five, a five year plans. And the. So incovert question. First five year plan. Industrial key. Okay, okay, next third five year plan. So up rain. Manaki. Nineteen fifty six, first five year plan, nineteen fifty six to nineteen sixty one, second five year plan. Now nineteen fifty six to nineteen sixty six, third five year plan. Okay, Indian economy. And industrialization. Self reliant and self generating economy. Self reliance and self generating. Main motor. Agriculture gave top priority because first. First law agriculture. Second law industrialization, public sector. Third law again agriculture products. Third five, five year plan. Definitely. So like situation. Agriculture gave top priority to support the exports and industry. Target growth rate. And achievement growth. Okay, so. Manakchurand. At the time low manaki Chinese aggression, Chinese war. Indo-Pac War nineteen sixty five. Chinese aggression. Civil draft. Even problems. Manaki five point six target. Two point eight. Okay, so. If you war situation. Agriculture exports. So then can complete. Ah time low. I a war side. So manam. Alaga at the time low. Complete lost time low, complete failure time low. Three five year plans. Ah then the plan holidays. Plan holidays. Adi nineteen sixty six to nineteen sixty nine, nineteen sixty six to nineteen sixty nine. So three annual plans. Every year. Main focus. Agriculture activities. Here main. High yield varieties of seeds, high yield varieties of seeds. Elanti yields. Rice low, wheat, jowar, bajra, maize. So we wheat low. High yields variety. Okay, chali important question. Growth rate was three point nine only. Next, next, next topic, next five year plan. Manaki fourth five year plan. Fourth five year plan. Nineteen sixty one, sixty six to nineteen sixty nine. It is plan holiday. Plan holiday. Plan holiday. So here manaki growth rate. And at the time low nineteen sixty nine time low. Prime Minister. Okay, a prime minister presented by PM Indira Gandhi. Based on guard Gill formula, guard Gill formula. First to five year plan. Harald Domer model, Harald Domer model and second PC Mahalanobis. And here fourth. So here. Next topic. You just follow video clearly. Based on guard Gill formula. So up or up. Five point six percentage. Target growth. But achievement growth. Sure and again downfall. Up or ah main aim. Growth with stability. Up or man complete. E nineteen sixty six to sixty nine time low complete. So then stable. Um e fourth five year plan low. Growth with stability. Progress towards self reliance. So dependence. At the time low fourteen major Indian banks. E green revolution. Green revolution. E five year plan. Then eh, then a father of green revolution. Norman Borlaug, Norman Borlaug. Boosted, it is boosted agriculture. In India, e green revolution. Productions, food grains. Productions. In India, the green revolution led by MS Swaminathan. In India, so father of green revolution. MS Swaminathan. India low. Okay, here I gave definition also GR, GR means green revolution. Great, great increase in production of food grains, especially wheat and rice, wheat and rice. Draft area program. Third five year plan. Okay, next. Next for, so even screenshot. Uh in the. Free time low. So next to fifth five year plan, fifth five year plan. Chala takko. Okay, here. Year which is nineteen forty four, nineteen seventy four to nineteen seventy nine. Ever prepared. Okay, this is previous year question. Here main objective, main objective. E five year ba- plan low. Okay, yeah, any question. Okay, garibi hatavo. And Garibi hatavo Hindi low Garibi means poverty and hatavo means removal. Okay, Garibi hatavo removal of poverty. Attainment of self reliance. Manam, first e third five year plan. Third five year plan. Self reliance, self reliance. Other countries. Imports. Imports. Uh under. So maximum exports. Pergotunde. Here target growth rate. Four point four percentage. Achievement achieved growth. First time, first time. Positive low. Positive low. First time, eh eh five year plan low. Fifth to five year plan. Indira Gandhi. The national highway, highway system. At the time low and minimum needs program, minimum needs program. At the time low, minimum needs program. At the time low introduce. Minimum needs program. M N P was prepared by DP Dar program. Actually, five year plan. So and the. E M N P was prepared by home, home DP Dar. Aimed to provide basic minimum needs, basic minimum needs. Provide. Eka M N P. Implementation of twenty point program, so this is very important fifth to five year plan, twenty point program. Here introduce. Nineteen seventy five, nineteen seventy five. It already. In nineteen seventy eight low, the newly elected. At the time low nineteen seventy eight low. So up or eka plan. And that. And the new sixth to five year plan. Rolling plan. Introduce. And rolling plan. Uh nineteen seventy eight to eighty, and one year before. Nineteen seventy nine. But nineteen seventy eight low, Moraj Desai government. Okay, eka plan. Nineteen seventy eight low. Manaki rolling plan. Malde Indira Gandhi. Nineteen eighty time low, again reelected and rejected. Jantadal. Five year plan. Again, Moraj Desai. Plan. Okay, next to sixth to five year plan. E sixth to five year plan. Upon. So nineteen eighty to eighty five, again five year plans. Main focus. Increase national income. Increase national income. Technology. Okay, e population. Population. Control. Decrease in poverty. By using some programs. Our programs. Trisim program and NRIP program. Target growth. Five point two percentage and achieved growth. Five point seven percentage. To prevent. Family planning. Main focus. Population explosion. Family planning. And recommendation of Shiva Raman committee. Shiva Raman committee, e national bank. National Bank for Agriculture and Rural Development. Establish. So very important point. Ever eka recommendation. Establish. Answer is sita Shiva Raman committee. Next. Seventh five year plan, seventh five year plan. Nineteen eighty five to nineteen ninety, seventh five year. Okay, it is one food grain production. E deetla. Green revolution. Green revolution. Manakchelsu India low green revolution. Manaki Swaminathan. Okay, manaki. Accelerating. Already manaki. Food grain low production. But. Okay, and employment. Increase. Okay, so main focus on focus. Work, work and productivity and improve the social justice system. Food, work and productivity and. Food. Work and productivity. Employment opportunities. With social justice system. So it is manam very successful plan. Okay, almost target. Target growth rate. Five point zero. Achieved growth rate. Six point zero one percent. It emphasized anti poverty programs, anti poverty programs and by use of modern technology. And the need to make India independent economy, independent economy. Develop. And technology. Poverty, anti poverty programs. Introduce. It focused on attaining prerequisites of self sustained by two thousand, two thousand. Okay, ten year. Nineteen ninety two, nineteen ninety two, two thousand. Two thousand. Self sustained growth. Main target. Okay, after that annual plans. Due to political changes, set the center government was not able to introduce. Okay, change. Ah time low coalition governments. So e annual plans. Manaki uh middle low disturb. Okay, plan holidays. Plan holidays. E plan holidays. Nineteen nineteen sixty six to nineteen sixty nine. Again, if you. E annual plans, annual plans. Jargindi, annual plans. Nineteen ninety two, nineteen ninety two, okay. So manaki e area. Manakar. First point. At the time low manaki. Panchayat Raj institutions. Okay, Nagarpanchayats. Nagarpanchayats. Develop. Okay, at the time low manaki. LPG, LPG. Introduce. Liberalization, privatization, globalization. Okay, and India faced crisis of up or eh foreign exchange results. And balance of payment account. Chala worsening stage. At the time low. Liberalization, privatization and globalization introduced in nineteen ninety one. Up or ever introduce. Introduce. Manaki. PV. PV. Up or PM. Inflation rate was very high at this time. And growth rates was down to three point four. Definitely. So on the. Slow down. Chalo, eighth five year plan nineteen ninety two to nineteen ninety seven. Human development. Then a motor. Human development in various aspects was the main motor of the eighth five year plan. Pride is given to create sufficient employment opportunities, create sufficient employment. Impose restrictions on population explosion, vaccination at the time low. In the family planning. Vaccination, primary health care to every humans and strengthen the basic infrastructure. Manam strengthen. E main priority. Main outcome. Highest economic growth for so far. Any three point six. Okay, I. Six point zero one. So, if put. Six point eight. Manaki e five year plan. Okay, so high growth of agriculture, allied sector and manufactured sector. Okay, manam. Agriculture key. And industrialization. Open market. And imports, exports. Do to. Exports and imports. Due to LPG, LPG. LPG. Exports and imports. High growth in exports and imports. Improvement of trade in the current accounts deficit. Here target growth. Five point six. Manaki achieved growth. Okay, at the time low manaki India. W T U P. A member. Chirindi. E year. January, January first nineteen ninety five low. Okay, next to ninth five year plan. Nineteen ninety seven to two thousand two. So up or. Nineteen forty seven. Nineteen forty seven to nineteen ninety seven. Manaki fifty years. Fifty years. So up or manaki. Growth with social justice and equality, growth with social justice and equality. Up or prime minister. Atal Bihari. Ah time low priorities. E poverty. Joint efforts of public and private sectors in guaranteeing economic development. Okay, manam. Mixed economic. Public sector. Private sectors. Kalsi. Plan. Empowering social disadvantaged guests classes like S S S. Eh they the backward classes. Manaki. Empowering. And developing self reliance and primary education for all children, all children. Okay, primary education for all children. Article twenty one. Main out coming. Main out coming. Seven point one. Six point eight. Achievement. Okay, so it is ninth five year plan. Again, I am repeating screenshot. Next, tenth five year plan. Tenth five year plan. Two thousand two. Two thousand seven. Two thousand two. So then a main motor. Monitorable targets. Monitorable targets. Then they monitor. Reduction in gender gaps in literacy and wage, okay? At the time low manaki. Chala acts. Industrial acts. Chala. E. E gender gaps. Literacy and wage, wage. Equal wage for all. At the time low. Prediction in infant and maternal mortality, improvement in literacy, access to portable drinking water for all. Cleaning of major polluted rivers, governance, governance. Governance. Factor of development. Agriculture. Prime moving force of the economy, okay? Agri- agriculture anedi, prime moving force of the economy, okay? The, appudu aim chesar ante, ee state wise breakup anedi ivadam jergindi. Induku a targets ne, a growth ne, a social development ne achieve avadam kosam, state wise, ze state ka, a state lo development anedi. Individual development chupichi, valle combine development ka chuddam anedi, chusar anmata. Okay, target growth ochesi tenth to five, five year plan lo eight percent. Achieved growth ochesi seven point six percentage, achieved growth ochesi seven point six percentage. Next, eleventh, uh, five year plan anedi, two thousand seven to, two thousand seven to, two thousand twelve variki. Undi, dinne yekka main aim ochesi towards faster and more inclusive growth, towards faster and more inclusive growth. Indlo aim include ayundante, rapid growth, reducing poverty, creating unemployment opportunities for all. Access to essential services in health and education, especially for the poor. Extension of employment opportunities using M G Naraga, okay, Mahatma Gandhi. National Rural Employment Guarantee Program, okay? So, env- environmental sustainability, environmental sus- reduction of gender inequality, reduction of gender inequality. Ikka yekka target growth ochesi nine point zero percent aite, achieved growth ochesi eight percent ra, indlo undi. Next, twelfth five year plan. Twelfth five year plan yekka main aim enti dinke faster, more inclusive and sustainable growth, so ivani questions lo ocharande. Questions la usstundante, faster, more, uh, which five year plan has the main aim. Of faster and more inclusive and sustainable growth nowdi, adi twelfth five year plan. Aim include ayundi, strengthening infrastructure projects, infrastructure projects ne strengthening chedam. Providing electricity supply in all villages sa time kala. Removing the gender and social gap in admissions at schools. Improve ca- access to higher education for all. Okay, target growth ochesi nine point zero percentage, okay, but in two thousand twelve, National Development Council anedi. A growth rate of eight percent ne, uh, access chedam jergindi, approve chedam jergindi, okay? So these are the first five year plan to, twelfth five year plan anedi, manam chappuntu ocham epad varki. Okay, so dinne yekka, ilan, ee topic pene, elanti questions adagana nikchans undante. So ah questions manam chuddam oksare, okay? Oksari. Uh, valle chaptanano, anni screenshots eka teeskundee, and uh, this is small request from my side. Ilanti videos mikku regular ka cheshtune untano, and we are going to launch some very important, very, very important, uh. Yekka concept anedi teeskuntanano, daily, daily twenty questions anmata, daily twenty questions, very, very important, very, very. Very, very important questions ne manam, daily twenty questions anedi program. Create, create cheshtunano, daily, every day morning, mikku seven A M ke, seven A M ke mikku. Uh, YouTube lo usstundi, definitely on our channel lo, Simhavur City ane channel lo. Miro dinke just create chayalsin entante, ee twenty questions ne first oksari jagrattha gavinandi. Okay, a twenties o- uh, questions ne skip chaykunda, fast mode lo aina parledu. But a twenty questions miru, uh, slow ga chusi, solve chedanike try chendee. A solve chesin tharavata, enni questions miru chaygalgaro, a- avani, uh, out of, for example, twenty, twenty by. Enni questions chesar anedi, nakku comment section lo teleje. Okay, okay, mikka session gankalachte, just please click on like button. Like button ne share, click cheshte, miru, din valla two three upegaal guda untai. Mikku like, liked videos lo story untundadi, valle mikke appudanna kavalanunkunappuru, appudu revision cheskochu. Second point entante, ilanti like raavada valla, nak kuda koncham motivation durukundhi. Motivation to mali inkoni, ekko video chedanike, nen try cheshta untano, okay? So ippar manam ee five year plans no baganga, koni, previous year most important expected questions, previous year lo argi na questions, manam oksari mali chuddam. Okay, already manam idi first chusamo, ippar manak concept anedi ardamayende, ardamayende ka batey, definitely. Ya five year plan lo baganga, ikka question chuddam. Which five year plan of India placed first priority to agriculture and irrigation? Irrigation, manam chusangada, agriculture ne irrigation ne, ye first, uh, ye five year plan lo chesar ante. First five year plan anmata, first five year plan lo, yekka agriculture. Irrigation ne top priority lo teeskundu, so second question, ee questions miru solve chedanike try chendee. Solve chesin tharavata answer chodandi, answer chudas, chusata, ee out of, nenu ten questions chesanipudu. Ee ten questions lo, enni questions correct aaya yo, nakku comment section lo, please inform and. Chappan gada, miru like chedam valla, mikku two benefits untai. Okati ochesi mikku liked videos lo save ayuntundi, you can revise at, at any time. And second ochesi, nak kuda koncham motivation anedi duruktundi. So ilanti videos inka cheshtune untano, mikku, ikka question chuddam. During which five year plan did government formulate agriculture policies? Agriculture policy led to the green revolution, led to the green revolution, see, see here. So ya five year plan lo baganga, agriculture, green revolution ne introduce chedam, formulate chedam jergindi. Okay, so me yekka answer chuskundee, and now the answer is third five year plan. Third five year plan, third five year plan, okay? Next question ochesi, next, ee twenty point formula, twenty point program anedi. Ya year lo launch chesaru, twenty point formula anedi, program anedi, ya year lo launch chedam jergindi. Nineteen sixty nine kado, nineteen seventy five is the correct answer. Okay, miru solve chedanu try chendu, pass chendee, solve chendee, speed avute video. Pass chesi, solve chendee, atharavata answer chodandi, miru out of ten lo, enni mikku correct answer achindu, oksari. Uh, comment section lo tapukuna telechendee. Next question, next question ochesi, second five year plan is based on which model, second five year plan is. So Harad Amor Malal anedi, first five year plan, manam chusamo, first five year plan. And Rudra Manne kado, Chakrabarti Sadi kado, P C Mahalanobis is the correct answer for this, okay, adi second five year plan. Next, the main reason for global, globalization, globalization chedanke re- main reason enti, main reason enti. Main reason aim ayuntundi, okay, gap between rich and poor, ilanti esal manam dis- discuss chayledi, rich keep poor ke discussion anede chayledu, okay? So ida ita kado. Political parties, political parties se, uh, main reason ayituntunda, dani sammanamalaidu. Message oriented films asale edi matter kado, so fast growing technology knowledge anedi, correct answer. Fast growing technologies anedi, correct answer for this question. Okay, so note cheskunta undandi, ippar varki five, five out of, ento chay chuskundee. Sixth question. Which among the following is not an objective of Indian economic plan, Indian economic plan? First. Population growth unda, population growth kosam egada? Not an objective, not, ikka edimarcho du, not an abje-. Population gro- growth anedi manam ikka discussion undadu, so keep it, uh, blank. And industrial growth anedi jergindi, employment creation, employment opportunity anedi increase chedam jergindi. Self sufficiency anedi manam kotkuntne unna first nunchi, so answer is. Population growth, answer is population growth, next. Seventh, seventh question ochesi. Which five year plan focused on growth with social justice and equality? Growth with social justice and equality, sixth to five year plana, no? Ninth five year plan, yes, okay, so seventh kuda kado, fifth kuda kada anmata, so answer is. Ninth five year plan, okay, vilathu screenshot teeskundee, screenshot teeskuni. Uh, miru yekka score ne nakku comment rupe ama chappala anedi achesstunano. And ee yekka session achthe gankal, definitely like chendee, chappan gada, like cheshte, two benefits untai. Okati mikku benefit untundene, nak kuda benefit anedi, motivation anedi durukundhi, ilanti videos chedanke. Okay, edana changes unda some voice kani, elanti issues ema unna, way of explanation kani. Edana changes kavalanunkunda, definitely nak comment section lo chappandi, no problem, I will definitely improve my side. Eighth question, uh, during which five year plan, the growth rate was lowest, 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 okay? Growth raise was lowest, manam chappunangada, third five year plan anadi, growth rate anedi lesska undi, okay? Next. Okay, a time lo manaki, induku lessai ndane edi manaki tellso gada, due to wars anmata. Wars chedam valla, manekka focus target ante, eklik shift aindi, defense side shift chedanke, ekko askaram ochindi. Next question, ninth question. Which policy measures has not been, so question ne chal jagrattha gvinale, question lo not anedi ostha matran chala danger edi. Okay, not anedi, manam, manam ela chusamanta, always positive mood lo ne chustam, but. Question ela adukunada anedi kuda, question ne jagrattha gachavandi. Which policy measure has not been a part of liberalization. Privatization, globalization. Liberalization, privatization, globalization lo part kani di enti ankunadu. Okay, chodan ikka, F D I in def- defense sector, okay, idi correcte parte. Uh, idi convertibility anedi, manam discussion chayledu, so keep it at blank, okay? Uh, F D I in retail sector, idu kuda. See, privatization, globalization of liberalization enti, F D As ne tiskaravada, manekka GDP ne main ga penshkoadam kosam. Andu kene GDP anedi, different sector lo kani, retail sector lo kani, wholesale sector lo kani, vedavata this. Ikka dinasare manam F D I ne access chesstam, disinvestment, disinvestment enti. Manam government yekka fund ne, investments nunchi koncham tapkuni, privatization ne penschadam. Ayaka values ne manam veyadan mehda, uh, invest chedanikchans undi, so definitely. Answer is correct capital account convertibility, next question, tenth question. Okay, this is the last question. Which of the following is one of the main objective of fourth to five year plan? Fourth five year plan key, one of the main objective enti, okay? Export oriented growth, main objective, but this is also objective main, okay? Growth with stability, okay, chuddam, this is also correct. Employment for all, this is also growth, price stability, anni correcte. So manaki main ga, ekko focus ekka jergindi, main focus anta, growth with stability, growth with stability. Fourth five year plan lo baganga ochindi, okay? So, andare kik request chesedentante, this is the last question, so again I am requesting, me yekka score ne, score ne. Out of ten lo, ento ochindho nakku comment section lo chappandi. And please like anedi click chayali, like cheshte mikku, liked videos lo save aita, ee videos anedi. Ee, ipparaita manak kavalshna time lo, maximum two point five speed kani, and three point zero speed kani, practice kuni manam. Uh, ee yekka questions ne solve cheskunti sariputundi, revise aivutundi, definitely. Okay, we most important, very, very most important questions nen picchaysano. And idai like cheshte nakku ikka, uh, definitely support ane durukundhi. Miro entamandhi chusar, entamandhi kenachindane edi kuda, nak koncham motivation ga kuda untundi, okay? Idi def- def- definitely, idi comment section lo matka chappan. Okay, so manam chappan gada, this is the program we are going to launch. That is solve daily, solve daily twenty M C Qs anedi, manekka program anmata. Ye yekka program ne day one inka chaylagnenu, so inkoka two three days lo definitely ham mikku, uh, iristano. It will best useful for U P S C, all types of exam, E P F O coming soon, E P F O undi. T S P S C group, group one, group two, A P P S C group one, group two, group three, group four, all state P S Is ki help avutundi. Ee F R O kani, Forest Strange Officer kani, junior lecturer kani, D L, uh, manaki degree lecturer kani, A, A double, A S O, A I O, C D P O. Manaki upcoming raag, ee S I of police kani. Police constable lo kani, ee C J L, C H S L, all types of exams lo, ye yekka M C Qs anedi. Manaki chala important, ee, ee M C Qs entante, nen daily seven thirty ki, morning seven thirty A M ke. Upload chesstam ka batey, ye yekka twenty M C Qs me chedanke, just okka twenty minutes lo. Mikku, miru yekka varka anedi aiputundi, ee twenty minutes varkne miru daily chaygalite. Daily twenty M C Qs chaygalite, definitely, nen, ivi chala important, very, very important questions. Miro kasaari ee day one video ne chura galite, day one video ne chura galite, miru inkadi ni kadik type apar. Definitely, indukante, anta manchi important, chala top questions ne picture anjergindi, a questions miru chodan oksare. Appu mikki ardamavutundi, anta stuff onna questions, okay? So ee five year plans save aita unna yo, a five year plans ne nechkunamo, dani related questions kuda solve chedam jergindi. First questions untai, next concept untundi, again question and answers untai. So idi manam approach aye, strategy, okay? Ki strategy gankamik nachthe, definitely like chendee, subscribe chendee, okay? So mali next video lo, ee yekka video to kaluddham, definitely ee video to kaluddham, until then take care, bye bye.